... For our office, for my seat. Miss Evans? Let's figure it out.
President.
Who's up?
President.
Uh, Councilman, please.
President.
Sorry about that. Paris?
President.
Uh, Councilman Williams?
Present.
And Council President?
Present.
Thank you very much. On your phone, Councilwoman.
Senior.
Sir. Uh, Councilwoman, we have, I saw our agendas, we have, um, we have a consultation from the Brooklyn Village. Up there.
A convocation?
Yeah, a convocation, here, which, uh, both seem to have, and they have a convocation with me. Uh, I haven't passed, so I apologize, I don't seem to have a copy of that with me here now.
Wait for this thing.
There you go, thank you. And any further questions? Sorry, I only have a copy of it, I apologize, it will leave into this meeting, so please do not forget. Uh, if we could move to the Brooklyn Village, uh, presentation.
Thank you so much, uh, President, and, uh, Crystal Police Department, which is now, uh, Vice President, and, uh, all the council members. Uh, first of all, we'd like to congratulate you and thank you for your service of saving a clinic and its residents. It's certainly appropriate at this time to honor women council members, uh, that tonight we celebrate with its history long. And I would thank you for serving us so well. Uh, my name is Gregory Johnson, I'm the Development Attorney for Orbach Affordable Housing Solutions. And my partner here today is Herb Ames. Um, many of you may have known Herb, he is the former Economic Development Director for First County. Thank you, Herb. Also with us tonight, uh, we have Michael Lee, who is a representative from Orbach, uh, Michael is saying to my, uh, letter, and also George Man, who is, uh, a representative of Orbach. Uh, Orbach is the new owner of the Brunswick Village Apartments at eight twenty-five Brunswick Avenue. That's just across the street from the Lady Ford Medical Center. I also wish to acknowledge the Attorney Wes Bridges, and City Lieutenant Garcia, and the Acting Director of Economic Development, Will Steinbacher, and the Administration for their timely assistance. It seems as though we've been attempting to get approval of the Orbach, uh, certificate need and the pilot for Peter. Um, and, uh, many of you, they have seen my face here from time to time. Um, I'm here to give this presentation to ask for the approval of the certificate need. And I do know that on the agenda is the certificate need, but there is no pilot. Uh, my clients have asked that we, that the city, uh, consider, uh, approving the pilot as well, because they are under certain, uh, time constraints by the New Jersey Housing Board's Finance Agency. And that's something that we certainly want to be sure that we're able to complete this project with the financing. Uh, so, this is a eight point two million dollar project. Um, it involves one hundred and ten units, and, uh, we cast out the handouts at this point. Uh, if you, uh, look through it, you'll see that it's filled with a lot of details. Uh, those details include, uh, a number of things, including the fact that when the, uh, Brooklyn Village Apartments were built in nineteen seventy-one, uh, over time, um, uh, many of the facilities, uh, lighting and other things have, um, have sort of aged out, and now it's time for major renovations. So, um, there is a significant need for the modernization of these apartments. The scope of work, uh, will include installing new and modern kitchens and bathrooms, and implementing electrical systems for energy efficiency. And, um, as you can see from the photos, uh, they're also in the back of the handout, but, uh, the first photo is of the existing kitchens that are in, uh, the various units. The second photo is of a depiction of what the new bathrooms will look like. And the third photo in the rear is a completely redesigned kitchen with new cabinets, uh, a gas range or electric range, a countertop, and floor. We will also be replacing the old roofs and build a new community building that will contain, uh, a lab for students, we call that a learning lab. Uh, in addition to that, six of the units will be ADA compliant with wheelchair accessibility. While the ren- while the renovations are underway, none of the tenants will be displaced. We plan to place tenants in a hospitality suite and or use local hotels of suitable at no cost of tenants. The goal is minimal displacements, and we do anticipate a, uh, minimal turnaround period. I would like to say a few words just about the pilot, and that's, uh, I think on page two or three of the handout. Um, HMFA requires that, uh, the, uh, revenue rate or the, uh, rate of taxing on a development that is financed through their agency, and that's at no more than six point two five percent. And that's set by statute. We estimate that based upon the revenue projections, the pilot will generate approximately one hundred sixteen thousand dollars in taxes in the first year, and then will continue to increase at a rate of two percent every year. Um, so with that in mind, over the course of a thirty-year period, the city will receive anywhere, um, from one hundred eight thousand beginning in the first year all the way up to approximately sixty thousand in tax revenue. Um, the next item I would like to talk about is minority women contractors being hired for this project. Um, Orbach will afford qualified minority women contractors and tr- and tr- and tr- city residents. Orbach has a rich history of hiring MBE and WDD, uh, companies on all those projects. Orbach will hold outreach meetings, uh, with black and Hispanic contractors to discuss the project and the scope of work. Uh, this will be a prevailing wage wage project. Uh, our commitment is to hire local contractors to do roof plumbing, electrical, uh, work on the project. And the timeline is one year, from November twenty twenty-three to November twenty twenty-four. We thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation. We look forward to a successful project at the Brooklyn Village Apartments. It's our goal to provide attractive and modern apartments for our tenants and city residents. If you have any questions at this time, be certain to call me.
Council President? Uh, well, sorry to interrupt your presentation. I'm quite familiar with these apartment complexes, I have spent a lot of time escorting two residents in the last year or so. Um, so I'm very glad that you're going to be, uh, this place, that was an immediate concern I had. But I am curious, uh, you said you'll leave, you could tell us some other places which will be safe, clean, uh, not too far from life, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you're not advising me to talk about it?
Right, and I was a part of it previously in Roselle, where the, uh, owner of the building, Roselle Street Housing Authority, they were able to do kitchen and bathroom penetration in one day. When they could not, um, leave that time schedule, they had all available open units that actually the tenants would stay there just temporarily, building, and that was a very successful project. It was, uh, around the same price limit of eight point two million dollars.
And I understand, uh, now being that there are one hundred and ten units, uh, what type of repairs and replacements have been done, and what will be the duration, having to take over one unit? Um, because particularly there are a lot of seniors.
Yeah. Sure, sure. So, um, as I understand it, um, Michael, do you want to press the issue?
Yes. Uh, welcome to the next quarter, and, uh, I'm going to present, like I said. Uh, to answer your question, um, what we do for senior residents of the, uh, council, we're all processes. They only work in the unit through the hours they need to fly. We do provide hospitality, restaurants, and places that they have, if they're uncomfortable, or if they, uh, doesn't, um, use the place, um, what they're comfortable with, we'll even get them on top of the day, they're working along with the schedule overnight. Um, the duration of the work is sporadic, so to, for example, um, they do put in a kitchen during, in one day, and then the flooring for another day, the windows another day, it's impossible to get the proper craftsmanship and, uh, clean, um, definitely clean up and return the unit in those type of hours. But every day that, um, we're in the working unit, we're happy to provide facilities for the tenants and basically so choose not to, you know, just enjoy hospitality, for instance.
So it should be now, just our patient, and a lot of the same on the top, right?
That's right. The only, um, thing where that, um, does not, um, stand worth is that we do have to pay five percent of ADA units, which are, uh, accessible units, which, um, they, um, are totally transparent because of all the requirements and things, and they would have to leave those particular to five percent units per, per week, and we would pay for all accommodations.
Thank you. And I have a couple more questions. As far as, um, will the rent prices be staying the same, or will we increase them to help, uh, help us pay for, um, on the renovations? I know you're going to mention that, but also there's expected to be a lot of development in capital health system.
So here's the beauty of, uh, these programs, and that's kind of why I would come, um, and ask for your help, and also that change in favor, but we're, uh, basically, this would be, there'd be a deep restriction on this project as well, so although asking you guys to support the project and also, um, help to maintain, not that we're not willing to pay the tax rate, imagine this is point two eight, but there's gradual increases because it would be deconstrived for thirty years, that's a requirement in the resolution of, uh, the commission of that condition, the rents are restricted, so they're section eight rents. They only, uh, charge a percentage of somebody making money, they cannot change.
So then those rents would be, um, their life, uh, would exist a longer than the same life of the pilot, so it's there, it's there.
That's correct, but they do increase, you know, the cost of living, but it only depends on some of these income, and their income, um, goes down, their rent will not, you know, increase, however, if there are proper increases, then their income does, um, you know, will be, uh, but it's restricted to the possible.
Thank you. It's an obvious concern for you that, uh, particularly senior, anyone would suddenly price that at whatever that.
A hundred percent. And the other beauty of this, what we're doing is, we pay some utilities, but some utilities are section eight for rent, and they're given allowance, and we're putting in energy efficiency, um, measures, so it will actually be able to save on the energy utilities as well.
And then, uh, just a couple of final questions. Every dimension prevailing wage, will there be any union, um, employment in this project?
Um, we don't, um, have a union or non-union restrictions, so obviously, um, we, one of us contractor, we have to pay for everything, so we don't discriminate whether it's an or not union. Every person who's on the job has to pay the required rate that, um, is published by the government. Uh, there are requirements that we always concede expectations, and that we did, or mentioned, and we keep them to be, um, hiring percentages that we will obtain, and in addition, I don't know, we always have local job barriers. We try to protect communities because we want people to invest in, uh, higher as best as possible.
And my final question, uh, as far as the pilot, uh, would you have to have a very high level of urgency actually go through this project, or could you have, uh, a lower amount of years for the pilot to be able to financially?
So here's the problem, um, we do need a pilot, because there's a requirement of the city agency. What happens is, if you go as low as, um, twenty-five, just to be completely transparent, if it goes lower, what happens is it's a lower loan receivable, which would enable us to not spend the same dollar amount on, on rehabilitation. But also, the reason why the rehabilitation is expensive is, it doesn't even have, uh, community building for congregation or social services, which we're going to provide, partnered with the hospital. So that is a large expense, because there is not a building in such that at the time, so not only will it be, um, obviously, preparing units that are supposed to be, we also always build in addition onto the management office to have, you know, community consolidation, and then have social services, but we want to provide free charge. So if we do cut the budget, um, the money would have to come from somewhere, unfortunately, because the budget needs a bunch of money. What happens is a lender, the state agency is basically giving the bonds, and then their, the bank basically finances the bonds over that period of time to the state agency. The lower the amount that they're guaranteeing from, what they're concerned about is the, you've read it, that all of a sudden you get a large increase of taxes, and they can't, they've already agreed to cap the, uh, rents, the budget will be minimalized.
So you wouldn't require a company million unless you have a period of, because if you go any less than thirty or two point five, then the amount of money you have to borrow, you don't have it possible.
That's correct.
Thank you so much.
And just to be clear, if eight point two million is present construction, we are hard in margin, because there are replacement reserves, so, uh, we can, obviously, we can't do grants, but we have to have money allocated that is reserved by the city agency to make sure the project is always maintained.
Thank you so much. Council President?
Any other questions? Um, just really quickly, you're trying to start, first of all, now that time, you're starting to finish what you're talking about.
Um, we ask for a year, because just with inspection, and we want to be building and everything else, but we believe we can complete the project satisfactory in nine months. Uh, the problem is, just to, to be clear with everyone, is, we're at this meeting, and you're trying to get earlier, we really need the resolution of here, and obviously, we thought of it as well, because the UGH of the Fed will not start the bond process until that transfers, which we would get until June, so our closing would be until November, because there's several steps I have to take care of, so I can ensure it's immediately, and by November, uh, twenty twenty-four, we can get your draft.
Thank you.
Council President? Um, you said there's a hundred and ten units, how many of the hundred and ten do you draw?
Uh, all of them.
All of them. Thank you very much.
So I just have a question to, um, you said that there's six, so is that the ADA compliant? Um, do you have any pictures or can you give me a visual of what that looks like as opposed to the other side going to be in there? Does that mean that they'll have lower stills, they'll have the countertops, the bathroom, of course, wider? Um, and who is regulating that?
That's correct. So, um, basically, a hundred and ten requires a lot of stuff, and so the city agency, it's all, well, fair analysis, so there's a new pass requirements, we can now publish, look at, but it's a countertop, like, uh, the door has to be, uh, thirty-six inches, the bathroom, so we're either on a steel or, or, you know, whatever. What we do is, we don't change anything, so, like, the countertop is lower, however, they're still getting a little kitchen, and the, you know, they're getting, um, we are seeing, um, stainless steel appliances, too, that shows the back, and maybe this valve, they'll still get stainless steel appliances, it will just be, um, will be ADA accessible, so the contract, um, is basic, and then obviously, under the same, uh, cabinet will start again, because the return has to be able to, to warm it there, all such things are around, or have to be in certain areas, so it just has to be those requirements. And, uh, there's some grants that have to go once they begin, and, uh, we got to give them certain.
So, did you get, where did you get the number six from? Is that the number you said currently of ADA?
No.
Where are we getting that number?
It wasn't a requirement. It's five percent, that's a requirement, that's very long.
Okay, so, so what are the four rules that are required, that, for, for the residents? How do you want to see for that?
Uh, so what happens is, if somebody comes, there are, uh, there are reasonable nominations, so if somebody had come in and needed a reasonable nomination, um, we're handicapped, and, uh, obviously, as a second through the list, like, you know, we would have to provide grants and other, um, absurd things to, um, support something that would safely and appropriately.
So I guess my question is going more towards, with those residents that are currently in there, and let's say there are eight that are currently in wheelchairs, that need ADA, um, accommodations. Is there anyone going in now to check to see how many, I know that's required, but for what is needed is my concern. So if I have ten, and there are only five, six that are trying now to have those residents who are in there now that are not, that are, if they are, their accommodations not being made?
Correct, and we, we would interview, um, all the tenants, and they do have, we would, uh, help to follow up the, the certain requests, because it's going to be a lot of covered, and, uh, probably some other ways of using, you know, special accommodation requests. However, currently, there are no ADA accommodations at the site, so of course, I would be more struggle, like, in that.
Alright, so, and that's, and that's, I know we appreciate you actually taking that into consideration. I was the former chair of the inventory, so this is very close to me, um, so that's why I'm asking. We think, no, I know they don't have it now, but I would hate to see for some to get it that needed, and then others who still need it not be able to get it, so that's why I want to make sure that we're going in there with the inventory, to make sure that everyone who needs it actually has it available to them.
We'd be happy to do that, and, uh, we'd be happy to help upset all the reasonable accommodations. Like I said, that is not a reason, like, you know, I've seen, uh, clearly expand, but if I wash my drawers, or somebody, you know, to ensure any kind of.
Okay, my final question is, um, I know Councilman Williams did, uh, question on the unions. Um, you said you don't have, uh, you don't differentiate anywhere that is, if our unions do come to you, and they say that they'd like to take on the job, because I want to make sure that there's enough for everybody to be, um, whether it's unions, they get a portion, and then the other residents, they get, um, a portion, so is that available, available, availability there? So they can work with both sectors, so we can work with our union and also work with our DTA?
Yeah, so basically, what we do is, we want to hire the best available, uh, contractors, so, um, there are a couple of prerequisites, they have to be available, they have to have appliance and products, appliances, they're credible, they have experience, they're willing to do the job, we would love to hire them.
Okay, and my final question, um, there have been folks who come into our, uh, city, and they say that they'll hire transit residents, and there's a job that, let's say, lasts nine months or a year, and there's jobs that go to the transit residents, are the ones they get to drive the truck, come back, and they can say they hired them, and that's only a week long, a month long at most. I just need to make sure that you understand that it is important to us that our residents can't be equal there. I know there will be people coming from outside of our city, but the appointment, that I need to make sure that is not, so that they are getting the, uh, the last, the promise, so to say, off the table, that they are actually going to get an appointment. They will be able to sustain themselves and their families when they come in, so they, I don't want them to come in and say, oh, we gave them a job, they had a job, they went to go pick up the stuff from wherever, and then that was it. Longevity is what I'm looking for, is the, for the duration of the contract, is what I'm looking for with our transit residents.
Our first priority is, if you get a job fair, where everyone's willing to participate, we do ask, and, and we definitely, first by organizing, we, we try to, well, we'll hire, we want the tribe, like, we want local electricians, local workers, their license, so we would prefer we use transit based companies, and as the manager's a problem, so, so we let them get the hiring, so we, we have a job fair, we bring in all the applications, and we're hoping that these transit based companies are hiring people. If we don't see it, we would bless, you know, qualified, you know, applicants. It's just part of, you know, individual businesses, so, for example, just to be fully transparent, local plumber will say, look, we require to make best efforts and hire, um, transit residents. At the end of the day, uh, we do need them to be capable to do one work. So if we will go over the opposite difference, uh, you'll see, this job, and other companies referring to, they're all dynamic, so they're all paid these jobs, so no matter what job somebody has, they will be getting, you know, substantial money. But that's what you said, we don't want them to hire somebody, we want somebody, you know, contributing, and providing with the help, so we'll honor that, and others, or rest of the world.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation, thank you so much.
Thank you. Council President, please.
One more question.
Well, I suppose, what is a job fair now? When is the soonest you could have a job fair?
Uh, we would have a job fair ready for closing, for the recent dating, so, but we have to start in November, we have this job fair between September and October, only for the recent dating, that we don't want people to apply their job that's not coming for a few months and be waiting for employment that doesn't exist yet.
Thank you.
Well, Lord, is that the only, is that the only way I can answer?
No, we, uh, we send out, you know, different bidding, uh, contracts, we also advertise to the local papers as well.
Just to add, you know, that, uh, Herb Ames is the Chairman of the Capitol Region Minority Chamber of Commerce. It's our focus to help minority women contractors. We will make a big push to, with the TV department, with Orbach, so that we don't have a problem where minority women contractors feel as though they could have that out of the process, and they would get, we can, we can afford, so we will be more, we will find, uh, that we, we want in the process.
That's me, I'll make me come out with my heart out. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Welcome, Council President.
Please.
Council President, I understand that this time we should public comment for agenda items only. This is supposed to happen for agenda items, agenda items, I'm not pushing a comment on, on any agenda items. I see, now, Council President, we should go to both businesses.
Please.
Sorry. Both businesses, we have ordinancees for second reading. For second, for second reading, we have a public hearing, ordinance twenty-three dash zero zero six, ordinance amended two dash one, and two dash two nine, out of the City of Trenton. Ordinance twenty-three dash zero zero seven, ordinance amended supplementing Trenton Municipal Code, Section eighty sixteen, rules of council. Ordinance twenty-three dash zero zero eight, ordinance, uh, defense and identification of city of Trenton officials and employees. Ordinance twenty-three dash zero zero nine, ordinance amended and supplemented, Section one five, one fifty dash thirteen A, of the City of Trenton Municipal Code, related lines and counties for literary collaborations. Ordinance twenty-three dash zero one zero, this is fifty dash ten, ordinance amended supplementing Trenton Municipal Code, Section eighty sixteen, rules of council. Public hearing, we have ordinancees, we will be called upon April sixth. That's awesome. Council President, I'm ready.
Please.
Um, we had a brief discussion during the ordinance session, um, one of the ordinance would respect littering, um, increasing defined. Um, there was a discussion in that same section, it also deals with dumping, which is distinguished from littering, and I give it the body for their decision whether or not they want to, um, do this, to add the dump address, council, uh, generally, was above this, for this to increase both littering and dumping, where if you want to have a bad handle, you have to leave it. Um, we just, the conversation, I want to bring your attention, because there are some center finds in that section.
I heard that's an hour and a half. That President? So, Mr. Bridges, um, part of the conversation, and then what we went through, illegal dumping, he said, we can go ahead now, like you're saying, and pass this as is, but then we will revisit the illegal dumping, because we do that separately? That's what you're saying?
Council President, I'm ready.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct, we can pass it now amended, um, just for everyone's benefit, though, if, if we do make another amendment, because it is ordinance, we're going to have to do an introduction at first and second reading, so, we'll go through the same iteration, have you, if you want, I think that the council will, uh, have to put their preferences.
So, um, let me ask you, what's the most expedition point of getting this vote to be here?
So, um, let me ask you, what's the most expeditious way of getting this vote to be here on?
The most expeditious way would be to amend it and to have it folded and amend it now so we can come back at a first and a second reading. Otherwise, we would be having, having the second reading, passing it, then amending again, having an introduction, first reading, and second reading. So it would make it two steps. It'll increase the process by two steps, a second reading.
So then those two steps, what would it become amended and then we're done on steps?
Pick up the debt, that should be, uh, for the body, yes.
Yeah, but so, I'm going to have to cast, because in the interim, while we're working out all the details of the dumping, etc., which I wasn't part of that larger discussion, we would at least have this effect, and it's worthy of having multiple steps to settle this. Because when you see, like, for example, we have the Capitol Street, towards Route One, there's a sign saying you only have fifty dollars on it. And that's not even accurate, because you find listing is that's just one hundred dollars. So I am very supportive of us getting all this fixed over time to a group of dumping and a larger littering line, but we have a lot of pieces to work on in the future. This could be in place, with the effect, in effect, now, doesn't it? Uh, and so that may be.
Let's play some of those.
So is there a motion to pull the resolution?
No, no, they're, they're making a motion, but not from their authority.
On the authority.
Yes.
So was the, was, or are we going to make the?
The vote is whether or not we have the second reading, as, as currently scheduled, now, or we put, amend subsequently, amend it to increase the dumping fines, or whether we pull it now, make those amendments, and then bring it back before this council to address law at one time.
So if I were to, a yes vote would say pass it down, and then there, or?
A yes vote would be yes to pull it or no to pull it. Yes to pull it if you want to pull it now and amend it, bring it back. No if you want to remain on amend to keep it on the.
Just to clear up your experience for these, we think, which, I think, will set.
Yes.
So would you leave a motion on the floor so we can know what we are voting on?
The motion is whether or not to pull this before the second reading and amend it, or not to pull it. Yes is pull it and amend it, bring it back. No is not to pull it, have it voted upon, and then come back and amend it again, have a later deal.
I agree with you. Yes, I'm, I'm.
Um, I would also, I would counter with Councilwoman Williams. Um, I don't think that it's a hard thing to amend it and bring it back for a second, a first and second reading. I think if you were to increase it now, this is possibly rather some money between now and then. So if it's not going to make any difference, but we've made, pulled it and amended, we still have to do the first and second reading, if, you know, go and proceed with it now, approve it, and then amend it, we still have to do the first and second reading. So I would rather us not leave as much on the table and pass it down and amend it and come back to it.
Thank you. So, that's my question.
Just to Councilwoman Williams' point to the, to the comment about having involved with the larger conversation, there was no larger conversation. It was the same conversation that you and I had with Clerk Garcia, where I was saying about the illegal dumping and how we should layer it in steps, right, with that final conclusion, um, being the surprise that it would be when it comes out. But, uh, that was the conversation. I just relayed to the people, um, during that review, what it was that we had discussed and what was the plan, so there was no, it, it still was what we had discussed, right? So in, in light of what Councilwoman Williams had said, uh, and President DeBoddy, I too am in agreement that we should just go ahead and do this now, then we can work out the case of the other, uh, other piece of it together and then move on.
Thank you very much. Um, so we want to go, yes, that we want to pull it or no, that we are going to leave it and we're going to proceed. Thank you.
Council, so the votes, for, for yes or no to pull the. Council, uh, Council members?
No.
Council, uh, Council Vice President, Missiana?
No.
Councilwoman Figueroa?
No.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
No.
Councilwoman Hansen?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
No.
Council President, please.
With due respect to what all has been expressed, I just vote no.
Understood, uh, that will not be pulled. We want to, ordinance is twenty-three dash O eleven, ordinance amended supplementing Trenton Municipal Code, section eighty three sixteen, rules of council. Twenty, ordinance twenty-eight dash twelve, ordinance amended supplementing Municipal Code, eighty three sixteen, rules of council. Ordinance twenty-three dash thirteen, ordinance amended supplementing Trenton Municipal Code, eighty three sixteen, rules of council. And twenty-three dash fourteen, ordinance amended supplementing Trenton Municipal Code, section eighty three sixteen, rules of council. These items, public, this idea of public hearing and second reading will be to take place on April twenty. Now we forward this is twenty-three dash eleven through twenty-three dash.
Eight.
Eight. We want to, we want resolutions, now. Yeah, we want resolutions. Council President?
Yes, sir.
Resolution twenty-three dash one oh seven, resolution authorized by Department of Fire and Emergency Services to accept award funding through FEMA assistance to the fireplace train for the installation of source capture exhaust systems at our fire stations.
Questions?
Council President? Uh, I would sponsor this.
Anyone else? Council President, Councilwoman, I also.
Yeah.
So starting with our Councilwoman Edwards, if you want to sponsor, everyone just go down the line, that's what you care to, how far it's harder, I'm ready to take. Same. Yeah?
Yes.
They go.
Okay. And without any hindrance, we consent to the resolution. Department of Fire, we put, uh, resolution twenty-three dash one oh eight, resolution authorized transfers to be made by the Director of Finance for calendar year twenty twenty-two appropriation reserves.
What's that?
At this time, Council President has been requested by administration for you to consider a walk-on resolution. We have to, all have copies of resolution twenty-three dash one thirty-three, we'll be needing. I'll leave that by side. That's resolution of the city, resolution of the city of Trenton County, Mercer State, New Jersey, authorizing submission of application to local finances for pursuant municipal qualified bond act, NJ SA forty-eight, forty-eight, colon, three, one, et cetera, in connection to the proposed issuance of, it's not to receive twenty million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, general obligation bonds, serious twenty twenty.
Can we have, uh, discussion of this? Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmembers, uh, my President, uh, at Cruz Business Administration Fair. Uh, thank you for the effort to the Mad President. Uh, this resolution is actually, uh, something that is done regularly when the city of Trenton has to go out for bonds. Uh, as it has been our practice here at the office, I have asked the experts to come in front of you when there is an issue that may need additional, um, explanation from the experts that put it together. Uh, I would like to introduce you, uh, Mr. Everett Johnson. Everett Johnson is our bottom counsel, and he's here to present this resolution and also provide you a little bit more details as to the process and why things are done a certain way.
Mr. Everett Johnson.
Good evening, Council President, members of the council. My name is Everett Johnson. I am shareholder of the Let's Move and Spitzer. We are the city's bottom counsel. For you today is a reservation authorized submission of application for local finance board. And authorizing issuance of twenty million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars of general obligation bonds of the city. Uh, one important, I'll point out that this is not new debt of the city. The city already has notes that were issued in June of last year for thirty-six million, one eighteen thousand dollars. They matured on June second of this year. Uh, notes are obligations, uh, that mature annually. And you either have to issue bonds to pay them off, issue new notes to pay them off, or pay them off on your actual budget. Um, and so these thirty-six million dollars of notes that are matured on June second have to be paid via bonds or notes of the city. Obviously, I can say thirty-six million dollars on your budget, you have to pay the notes off. Um, and the financial advice the city recommended that, instead of paying thirty-six million dollars off in new notes, that portion of that be issued in bonds, uh, reasoning being that today's interest rates are such that the, uh, one-year treasury rate is about the same, actually a bit higher than bond rate for a ten-year treasury. Uh, so therefore, this recommendation that the city would benefit from issuing bonds now, because a bond would do is for a lot of your interest rates, uh, on its debt for the next, you know, ten years or to bond mature. Whereas a note, you would issue one this year, and then you could lock another one, following year, whenever the term was over, without any real, um, certainty in terms of what your insurance will be from year to year. Um, and so therefore, you're going to have to say, issue bonds. Uh, and the reason why it's not the full amount, uh, thirty-six million dollars, because when you issue notes back in three years, you have to start making principal payments out of those even when you open them over. And so when you issue bonds, you don't have the same exact thing in your principal payments. So it makes it more, it's essentially the city to issue bonds now and start paying our principal. So you can pay our principal faster, versus issuing notes continually, paying our principal but going out for four years, you don't want the city to voice debt service, paying us interest over time. Um, and so when you issue bonds, and I'm going to take it a lot, but I think it's important for you guys to feel this, because I believe it's the first bond item that was before you, uh, this term. So when the city issues bonds, they issue them under something called the Municipal Qualified Bond Act. And that is a statute that authorizes force of estate aid to be carved out and to send to your bond holders before the city receives it. The benefit of that is, is that your bond rating, uh, is based upon its bid's bond rating, not your actual senior rating, which provides you with a cheaper interest. Think about your bond ratings, like, credit to credit rating, that are higher credit score, the cheaper your interest is going to be on loan. The same thing applies to your city debt as well. Uh, and so economically, you're in the same place, because the city, the state, you owe your state aid, you pay your bond holders, versus states, you have plenty of, can, can be different. You're in the same place economically, but from a bond perspective, it benefits you because you're paying less interest. Uh, but in order to issue bonds to the Qualified Bond Act, you need to go down to buy statute to get approval from the Finance Board, uh, which is a division of the DCA, uh, right here at Block Down Street. And so this application requires you to submit, I'm sorry, the resolution is authorized, authorized the city's application for local finance board. The reason why it's a walk-on is because local finance board only meets once a month. And the application will be deferred to meet before, before that meeting. So because they're going to mature on, on June second, the only means available, local finance board are April meeting. And maybe, probably maybe, is that, of course, the schedule could be selling notes before they meet in that. And so in order to achieve approval from local finance board at their April eight meeting, we need to be able to submit application down to the Finance Board, which this council has to approve to be a resolution. So that's why, you know, this is being walked on by the city now, uh, because of the timing of it all, they only meet once a month, this is the only time we get a resolution once a week to bond again. Uh, with that being said, I'll take any questions you may have. We want to say a lot, we best go fast, so, uh, this is the opportunity for you to ask any questions.
Council?
Good question. So, my President?
I'm honored to be here.
So to my understanding, this bond request is going to be used to pay our board to the bond, and it's, it's my right to let you go on, so that we have a, a clear understanding?
I think so.
I said, to my understanding, just at a brief glance, because of just how it is, that this money is going towards the board to the bond, uh, some of the thinking.
Yes, yes, sure. So, um, the twenty-two million dollars of bonds, twenty million, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars of bonds is covering general improvements in the amount of eleven million B twenty-six. General improvements are basically, um, that is multiple ordinances, not like one ordinance, that were adopted year, you know, over the fourth period years of the city. And that general would be, you know, roads, uh, you know, fireplace equipment, you know, uh, improvements to, uh, municipal buildings. I don't have a list of all the ordinances, all their improvements that each ordinance, some ordinances may have eight improvements, some may have three, some may have six, so that, I'm hoping to, but I was going to provide that information to you guys before we issued that. Um, eight million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars for border toll improvements, uh, three thirty-seven is for, uh, city toll improvements, and two hundred and ninety-eight thousand is for property toll improvements. And once again, each of those number, you know, missed by the board is that were fitted up by council, also approved by the Finance Board, uh, previously when they were adopted. Um, and they cover a, a plethora of different improvements from each of those different entities in the city.
And these, um, things that are, things are already listed items that need to be seen?
Yeah, so what the city does, uh, issues is definitely, that's pretty good idea. When the city adopted bond ordinances, they don't, you know, necessarily issue debt right away. So what the city does, they actually spend the money down first, and then they reverse themselves with that bonds. And so all this money is already spent already in projects by the city over the years. It's not a new bar, it's not for new improvements. This money's already been spent by the city already for riders' improvements in the overall course of years. Did I ask your question, sorry?
Thank you.
Uh, sir, I have a couple of questions. Uh, first of which is, did this, um, bond issue, the discount before the previous city council in the year twenty twenty-two?
This resolution, yeah.
Okay, so this is new. All right, my other question is, what is the interest rate that we would be paying on these bonds? What is the bond rate?
Well, we don't know yet, because the way this works, competitive, this is a competitive bond sale. And so what happens is we have to issue those of sale to let everybody know that on a particular date, we're going to give out some bonds. And then what happens is on that date, they actually submit it into the primary, blindly, they can't step this bids. And whoever also see the lowest, the lowest interest cost, which rate is the one you're better, to compare to the bid. So I don't get it, L, on March twenty-seventh, the rate's going to be, and then May, we ask some bonds. Uh, I can tell you that, um, I've seen bonds of other towns, uh, selling around three and a half percent, you know, about a better rating, than the moment, what this rate's going to be. So I don't know, I don't hope to have the year rate in May, I don't know what part it's going to be, but.
And no, that doesn't get great.
Yeah, it's repetitive, it's a repetitive process.
And then, now, what currently is our bond rating?
Your bond rating is, I don't want to say, off the top of my head, make wrong about me, is B double A three. But I will confirm that if you listen to my statement.
Uh, I ask you, just to pretend for a moment that it is a double A three. Can you explain that in layman's terms, what that means?
So, the highest bond rate we should play, uh, and then you have triple A, which is, you know, top tier, double A, single A, B double A, B, B triple A, sorry, B double A, B A, then B, B B. So I think there's a whole, there's a whole scale of rates in Europe. So the city is on the, the lower end of that scale, uh, which means that you guys are paying how it just costs to some municipalities to actually have a higher rating. Uh, you know, S and P and Booty's are currently requiring these, they're rating municipal debt. Uh, and so they have the capitalists, or, you know, our reference is to how to determine what the rate's going to be, based upon, you know, on the tax base, economics of the residents of the town, um, development along the town, the surplus, there's a number of factors that make that one's very rated. Uh, so, you know, Trenton is on a lower scale of that rating. Along, but, but most urban businesses, especially in Trenton, with all the same notes here, unfortunately, you know, you guys are on a lower side of scale. Hence, that's why we're looking at the state, this will call a five bond act. Uh, for the state's rate is not exactly super high for here, but it's still a higher than the city's rating. We still benefit from calling that five.
So having such a credit rating increases our borrowing costs on our debt?
Right.
So our code theoretically, if the state of New Jersey paid more for the land that it controls in the city, that would actually help us improve our bond rating and lower our borrowing costs, my correct? I'm not trying to get you to say that.
I know, that's all I'm here for. And put it this way, any time the city has more revenue, it's helping the city.
That's why it's on us to create, write the laws and such. Thank you very much, sir, it was great visiting you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Percy, what was that number, Anthony?
That means twenty-three, one thirty-three.
Twenty-three, one thirty-three?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you. And I'm gonna do, uh, that as a presentation.
So, we have, we, the rate is B double A one.
That's rather the usual rate?
Yes. The state's at A rating. If this might wind up actually like last time.
Thank you.
Moving on to Resolution twenty-three dash one-zero-nine, Resolution authorizing the issue of the legal procedure, David C. Thomas Senior, way to West Front Street and East Street.
Madam President? So do we have to say if we are gonna put it into the sponsor? Because you said with the type of rate, put it in here, we've already signed off on it.
Yeah, I may wear several council members up at this time, so you're able to see my associate, go ahead and sign.
So we don't have to publicly announce it? It just go, okay? Those who have not yet, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you. Resolution twenty-three dash one's half, Resolution accepting a bid awarding contract for a new sew. And Bellamy Incorporated, version, delivering copper sulfate for Trent Water Filtration Plant for a period of one year, from date of award, in the amount not to exceed fifty-nine thousand four hundred dollars.
Questions?
Uh, yes, ma'am, I watch, we asked, um, I believe, uh, throughout the law direction, Mr. Porches, if we could pull all the water and sewer resolutions, and so, uh, we can get a date from, uh, the contract we executed as well, the date of adoption by our council.
So, I'm, we're not gonna pull right now, the, uh, these cannot be adopted until we actually approve them, so we have a reading now, we go forward, please, Mr. West, it's a project directly on hold, once we go through, go through these, and we adopt them on, let's say, this Thursday, then from that date forward, that's when the date goes on, is that correct?
Well, these resolutions are on the agenda for tonight, so if they're going to be removed, council will have to approve their removal. I believe, uh, we spoke with Council, uh, Council Williams, and she wants to, um, have an amendment so that they specifically indicate not only the date, the effective date, because some of them are not affected to date of execution, also the execution or the adoption date. So I don't know if the headings can be amended by Thursday, I think, if you come up.
Counselor? I mean, to, to be candid, and to be very clear for, for the council and everybody, it, it's, it's difficult for us to say we're going to put the date specifically in the resolution. The process for these resolutions, you have to draft a resolution, you have to get certification of funds for the resolution, you have to get waivers for the resolution, then the resolutions have to go immediately, be signed off of, uh, legally, in the form and in substance, then it goes to the business administrator, then it goes down to the Fodder's Office. So if we, if we put them there, today's date, for example, and we don't have any of those items, and we put it before you had another date, we're going to have to amend it, and then it's, I have to go through that whole process. So, um, you know, the, the, there's, there's really no right answer, but what, what we discussed with Council, with Williams, is there is a date of adoption, it's on the actual document, um, and, you know, there, there's, there's really no right answer. So yes, we have a date on there, but if that resolution does not come before you want that date, we have to amend it, we have to go through that iteration all over again, so, um, it's just, you kind of, damned if you do, damned if you don't, and maybe, but I will say, for example, like the legal contracts, right, our law firms start in January 1, so if the services start in January 1, of course, we're gonna put that in the resolution that they're working January 1, we want to reflect that. But for things that are not going to be worked upon until it's voted on by, by this council, um, we could put it in there, but we really run the risk of voting on something that has to go back through the entire circuit and really creating administrative, managerial, kind of nightmare, and also putting a lot of pressure on the clerk with respect to reprinting them, recirculating them, getting, you know, new waivers. So I think, if, there has to be an answer, and there has to be a way we can do it, I just don't have a, a great answer right now, except with the exception of, with the exception of relying on that date of adoption from the top of the ordinance, it'll say the date of adoption.
So if we, so we vote on this, then we adopt, we, we, and we adopt it, and those people council again on Thursday, then maybe put Thursday's date on, is that correct? And it's from that date forward? That it is from that date?
That's correct, and that would be the date of adoption. I think, I think, um, just to, again, for, to share a conversation, there was some concern about, um, the public when they're searching for these documents, trying to make sure they're compliant. Um, I don't know the search capability of what folks were, I don't know what people are searching, but I, I do understand the inquiry, and I think, um, you know, if, if we have that date of adoption, that's really as good as, as good as we can do at this point in time, except those contracts, we know that they specifically start, like the legal contracts, to start in January 1, they will be, um, in the body and in the narrative of the resolution.
Mr. Cruz?
Hi, um, thank you, Madam President. Adam Cruz, this is our administrator, um, uh, to, um, echo what the Lord Eric stated, um, if you look at the, at the heading of the resolution, there is data, it's a one year from the date of award. The administration does not award a contract, we don't have that power, you do. And you award that contract on the date of adoption of that resolution. So when you're talking about a particular date, it is actually, the date of adoption is actually written on the resolution, date of adoption. And that is actually when you vote to award the contract. We don't have that power, that's the authority that was given to you, we don't, we don't do it. So when you are awarding the contract, it's actually, you are awarding the contract, and then of course, the mayor signs over behalf of, of the city as the, you know, the CFO. Um, but, uh, it, it is so much, it is so much easier actually for us to, uh, continue with the process of not having an actual paper list necessary, because as he explained, some contracts have to be dated to a certain date. But it is, it's so much easier for us to continue with the, um, with the process of, uh, relying on the adoption date because of all of the steps that we have to take. There are times when the, um, when the stake monitor is not around, he will have, you know, he won't sign the resolution, so, I mean, the, the waivers for, you know, two weeks, three weeks, sometimes even a month. And so the resolution will just sit there, and sit there, and sit there, and, uh, you know, it, it hampers the ability of the department to actually, uh, continue with the work, if we need to, um, if we need to order supplies, or if we need to, uh, perform a job. This one is for the, for the purchasing of the, uh, copper sulfate, I mean, the, uh, the, the plant operator who was here today, uh, they, uh, Ms. Theyam Hungry, will tell you, this is something that we cannot afford to go, you know, a couple of weeks, because two weeks is vital, uh, you know, when it comes to deliveries, when it comes to, uh, you know, you have to, as an owner, you have to do, uh, purchaser, uh, the purchaser goes through the system, uh, then it's created, it gets sent to the company, so it, it's several steps involved, but this is, we, this is why we said in the past that we would much rather go by that date of adoption. Another thing is, is that when you are doing the search on the city's website for contracts, uh, you don't look at a different date, you actually look up the name of the vendor, and then once you find the name of the vendor, or if you look for the date of the, when the meeting took place, you will find the resolution that were adopted on that meeting. But if you're looking for Adam Cruz, Adam Cruz Consulting, you will find all of the contract that have been awarded to Adam Cruz Consulting. But if you go on the page, uh, that, that the contract actually took place is actually the same thing at the date of adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Appreciate you. Mr. Colley?
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Cruz, uh, just so I'm clear, certain resolutions that we pass, say we passed it in March, the effective date is January 1st of two thousand twenty-three, for whatever reason, so that does not go to be one year from the date of the award, it's kind of got a retroactive, now these don't, the ones here, we do do them occasionally where it's retroactive, dude, like January 1st. So, the one that you're addressing is easy, the date of the award, it starts now one year, that's fine, but we have a retroactive date to say January 1st, or whatever reason.
So, so that is actually indicated on the body or on the heading of the resolution, for example, prosecutors, uh, law firms, I believe, we awarded a badge, and some of them have to go back to January, because the, the extent of the contract period was from January to December. And so, yes, some of them are adopted in March, but it's clearly stated that it will commence on January 1st.
That's a, I think, correct.
Yes. I guess, right, but they might have been, yeah, so that's correct, there are, because when the services being rendered, right? So if you have services, they're going to be rendered, we know they're starting January 1. Yes, there's things that have to be in there, because you're approving something that your service rendered back to January 1. But if it's for soul orbits, or, unless something is going to commence when it's passed by this body, we can put the date in there, but if that date is missed, if it's gone, we have to go back and do it all over again, so that's the, that's really the tug of war that there, again, there's no, there's not criticism of anybody's position or the process, it's just from an administration standpoint, well, not administration standpoint, from a Brandon Garcia standpoint, who's gonna have to print all these things back out and circulate them back around and get everybody's attention. It could, it could be a bit of a Yonkers task, or be doing an efficiency, you know, so I just put it out of the conversation.
Are you possible for this, if I have a question?
Please. Thank you. So first of all, I brought this up as an issue before this body over the past three days' months, about gates and listing contracts for resolutions, and one of the key reasons I do that is transparency for the public, also for people who do business and legal research and want to know, and as we're all so old and I need to make sure, so if you don't have it, you haven't been someone who's had a contract in legal research, and you don't have it in a resolution, it makes it actually harder for the researcher to find it, and you can find things, uh, live gate, because if you know the contract is ending, you can find one that was approved, but also in a number of issues where we already are operating under a contract, having an adoption date also protects this body, without one which approved by or not by the city council. So even one of the things I suggested was have, say, a semi-colon, say the adoption date at the end of the resolution, is the exception of adoption date, if it's approved, it's known to be the next week, which is, for this week, for example, would be March 23rd. So having that included at the end of every resolution, I don't think it's a major ask, I understand Mr. Porches and Mr. Colley and Mr. Cruz's concerns, and I'm not trying to include what part of the topic particular, Mr. Garcia, but in the interest of everyone out there, our citizenry as well as ourselves, I think having the adoption date include our reservation, uh, would be a wise one.
It counts, Mr. Williams. Uh, Mr. Garcia?
Yes. So would these others be?
Would you please vote for?
Vote for. Vote for, council members?
Madam President, I have a question for my attorney, if this should have the date including the title or in the bond, or is this, please, President?
So what we are voting for, what we are doing is, we are voting whether or not we want to hold this, and, um, waiting for the date to come, or if we want to go ahead and see. The challenge is, right now, we have to be voting on it. Once they're voted on, then we can adopt. Once we adopt, we can put a date on there, and then we can proceed with this. With items such as these that are pushed to our community, I don't, I, I personally do not care for delaying anything that has to do with the health of our community. So, um, that's why I want to have this vote for, I want it to be, so that everyone gets to have their own voice heard in this, but I do not want this to be something that we just pull. So we are voting whether or not we want to go ahead and see, which is how our administration and our, um, our team that's advisor, we should be able to go, if we have to adopt it, and then, once it is adopted, then it gets in, that is the part that we just asked for, the most I'd like to go ahead and do a vote for with that.
Okay.
So I'm saying, yes, if we, if you're voting yes right now, you're voting yes, that we are going to keep it on the agenda, if you vote no for not, you're pulling it on the agenda.
Madam President, I have a question. I would talk for that, we do not pull, is I was for this fee, uh, for this, so we can prove this, but going forward, that we have an adoption date for some of these resolutions that are being filed.
We'll have a discussion, because I want to make sure that we're doing this properly, that's it, all. So from my understanding, the date is not always going to be on it, because that is not what is always available, we have to be able to vote for, but that's a discussion we do, we have at another time, but right now, I'd like to go and receive the vote for this.
Sir? Uh, council members?
Yes.
Uh, council, put this down.
Yes.
Council, who is the role, Ted, bro?
Yes, and now, for it? Yes.
So yes, as intended. Council, council members?
Yes.
Council members?
Yes, can we add that on the red light, when it, uh, council will wait, if we can add it in the future?
So that's a yes, as intended, to not pull examples, okay? Uh, council, council members?
Yes, do not.
Yes, not. Council, President, you heard me?
Yes.
So yeah, we kept on the, we kept on the agenda, or on the, on the, excuse me, and with the second, the second?
Yes.
Moving on, Resolution twenty-three dash one-one-one, Resolution accepting a bid awarding contract for all incorporated supply installed, new controllers for natural gas generators at Central Pump and Gas, at Central Pump and Station, located at six-six-nine, that's in Brokepin's Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey, fully six-twenty, for a period of one year from date of award, and amount not to exceed ninety-four thousand four hundred fifty-four dollars.
Questions? Consent?
Resolution twenty-three dash one-twelve, Resolution accepting a bid awarding contract to municipal maintenance company to furnish its, for furnishing installation for filtered drainage valves and hardware, for a period of one year from date of award, that amount not to exceed eighty-two thousand two hundred and sixty dollars.
Questions?
Resolution twenty-three dash one-one-three, Resolution accepting a bid awarding contract to PDS Technologies Incorporated for the furnishing and delivery of ferrochrome at the water filtration plant for a period of one year from date of award, and amount not to exceed one million three hundred twenty-nine thousand six hundred dollars.
Questions? Consent?
Resolution twenty-three dash one-one-four, Resolution accepting a bid awarding contract to IDN Construction Corporation for demolition of nine forty-two Prospect Street Building for the Department of Water and Sewer for a period of one year from date of award, and amount not to exceed five hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Questions? Consent?
Resolution twenty-three dash one-one-five, Resolution accepting a bid awarding contract to Ferguson Water Works for the furnishing and delivery of high-end cars for Metropolitan M9 Ford, M250, and AP Smith Series S Fire Hydrants for a period of one year from date of award, and amount not to exceed two hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Questions? Consent?
Resolution twenty-three dash one-one-six, Resolution exercising a contract for an additional one year awarded to municipal maintenance company for the electrical, mechanical, and general maintenance emergency repairs at Trent Water Filtration Plant from date of award, and amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars.
Questions? Consent?
Resolution twenty-three dash one-one-seven, Resolution authorizing payment for a contract to Yukon Incorporated, the O Box Four Thirty-Nine, Bassman Bridge in Jersey, oh-seven-nine-two-oh, which was awarded on emergency basis for an emergency thirty-inch water main for a repair at the intersection of Southern Street and Esher Street, Trenton, New Jersey, for the Department of Water and Sewer, Trenton Water Works, in an amount not to exceed one hundred and eighty thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and eight cents.
Questions? Consent?
Resolution twenty-three dash one-one-eight, Resolution accepting a bid awarding Resolution accepting a bid awarding contract of Ducon Incorporated for furnishing installation of a dead-end flusher, dead-end flusher of sevens at Trenton Water Works in the amount, in the amount of one million, one hundred seventy-four thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars for a period of one year from date of award. Resolution twenty-one-six.
Somebody explain what that is.
Good evening, members. I'm Mr. Assistant Administrator. Uh, President, these flushers are actually the result of the issue we've been having in the township of Hamilton when it comes to the regional disease that we found in the system. Uh, these flushers are actually being bought and installed uh, at the, at the dead ends of the, of the, of the pipelines. And what that will do is that it will assist us in moving water through the entire system um, rather than just being able to flush it from where the existing fire hydrants are located. Uh, this money was actually already approved by the council uh, from the A R B funding receipt. So the vote was taken some time last year and we were able to go out the bid and we now have the, the bid on it, so that's why that is a work.
So, so we continuously just vibrates, it keeps the water flowing, so the water doesn't stay stagnant, right? You know, I said, so the water doesn't stay stagnant, it does continuously vibrates the water. Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Um, just to transfer that to the public, when we say consent on these agenda ideas, or just let you know, even though we just passed and we have not read through, we have not had a discussion on, the session starts on the week prior to us actually coming here, myself, myself, my wife, President, our clerk, and our legal advisor. So the rest of our council, they have not had the discussion, but we have, most of these questions have been asked at time. Consent?
Resolution twenty-three dash one-one-nine. Resolution accepting a bid awarding contract of AA Health Incorporated for H back systems, maintenance and Trent, at Trenton Water Distribution Complex for a period of one year from date of award and amount not to exceed sixty-one thousand, six hundred dollars.
Questions? Consent?
Resolution twenty-three dash one-two-zero. Resolution authorizing production of sewer charges of three thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars, fifty-one cents at one fifty-sixth State Street, count six-one-five, dash oh-eight-five-zero, dash three-zero-one, due to non-entry of water into the sewer charges.
Questions? Consent?
Resolution twenty-three dash one-two-six. Resolution to designate the area of Wells, New Jersey LLC to approve the terms and authorize the execution of redevelopment ring between the city of Trenton, excuse me, between the city and area of Wells and J, LLC for certain property within the New York Act of redevelopment area.
Questions? Do you have a question?
Yes, members. In the title, we're not going to be as strict with the dates, but it says for certain property within the New York Act of redevelopment, it didn't refer to a lot, it doesn't say the actual address rather than a certain property.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Mr. Standback, acting director of House of Manhattan Development. Uh, no, there's not a specific reason why it doesn't have that particular property, but I will, which in fact that the city does not own that property. So it wouldn't be a necessary situation when we put somebody else's address.
Thank you. Any other questions? Consent?
Resolution twenty-three dash one-two-eight. Resolution of the city of Trenton County, Purchase, New Jersey, confirming the need for rehabilitation of our one-hundred-and-ten unit, fourth housing building.
Questions? No, President, no, President, President, he said, he's voted for. It's definitely yes. Vote for, please, Mr. Garcia.
Vote for, members. Resolution twenty-three dash one-two-nine. Resolution authorizing the execution of purchase money, mortgage documents between the city of Trenton and Shenega and Mouser for the sale and purchase of one forty-four Tremont Street, block one-seventy-five, block four, block eight, city-owned property in the amount of sixty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Vote for. Can I have a question?
Yes, question. Um, the water compliance for this property, we are.
Uh, Mr. Cruz, Standback again, acting director of Manhattan Development. This is one of the properties that was actually sold as part of the auction process. So this is one where we can work a separate structure so we can help people get the property, allow them to mount, they will be pulled out of the property at any time.
Thank you.
Do you have a sponsor?
I would like to, I would like to.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Action, Resolution.
Yes, I'm voting for.
Resolution twenty-three dash one-three-zero. Resolution authorizing use of competitive contract and move public bidding for consulting services to assist the city of Trenton to implement the Trenton Mobility Opportunity and the included equipment, with the system project moves.
Questions? Consent?
Council, where's that little, little sponsor?
I saw that. So, I'll look forward, when we are sponsoring, do you, we can do that at the end, correct? If you don't have. It's kind of simple to be, and then it's going to be in the amount, come on.
Resolution twenty-three dash one-three-one. Resolution requesting a land award to the city of Trenton to undertake a preliminary investigation to determine whether vacant and or abandoned properties and Trenton Housing Authority properties with its imposed domino homes study area qualified as number, as an area in need of condemnation redevelopment pursuits N J S A forty-four, twelve, A, et cetera.
Questions?
Yes, I have a question. Um, I'd like to just give a little more information of what this action does in a practical sense. Does it come up to you as a question?
Council, who's Standback again, acting director of Manhattan Development. So this is a situation where, I imagine, the House of Assembly, you can talk a little bit more about the history, what's happening here? Well, what we're trying to do with the House of Assembly is designate the area that's in, that's specified in the documents as a choice neighborhood. And if God would, until the application, it was first step with respect to HUD. And now they've processed the application, they remember from Detroit, they had last week. So the next step here is to hand this sand over to the planning authority so they can do the, the actual investigation as to what it would look like in perspective of being a redevelopment area.
So no one has to worry about dominoes being demolished soon?
They, we don't have to, at all.
So we're going to lay any fears.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
I know we, we all like to have a long meeting, but there are people across the Trenton House on the door, getting their ice bag, uh, money being spread, and it was a castle we did, they didn't plan. When this month, if we invite them to the podium, if they don't mind. So just briefly explain what it is, because the people that they had at the home weren't going to attend it, just so the public can hear if they're prepared. What is.
Congratulations, I'm going to do that.
All right. Thank you for doing this, Laura.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman President. I'm Bobby Garrett, executive director of the Trenton County Department of Public Safety, name is Chris, I'm a current representative of the public. Yes, we have worked on the Choice Neighborhood Implementation Plan, a plan awarded two years now. Uh, it reimagines the transformation of the Dolly Holmes property as well as the parts of the North Trenton Neighborhood. This is a piece of our plan to be able to do a plan for a area of redevelopment and.
Let's find that, just let me, um, a little closer to the mic for that, also being reported, they want to be here.
Okay. This is, again, this is something that we have worked on for the last two years. Again, it reimagines our Dolly Holmes property, also the Junior One, uh, property, which is the first junior high school east of the Mississippi River, as well as a number of parts of the North Trenton Neighborhood. My plan includes revitalization of a couple of thousand, ownership and improvement of infrastructure throughout the neighborhood. So this is one of the pieces that will make us more attractive for our implementation grant application to HUD, which is, at this point, we're looking to apply for up to fifty million dollars um, to apply to HUD for choice implementation, implementation grant that we're looking to apply in November of this year. It looks like the fall of this year. And we're just really looking to catalog the development in North Trenton Neighborhood. Um, this piece gives us the ability to conceptualize this area um, in an efficient way, as well as it gives us the ability to gain points on different applications with state agencies, HUD agencies, HUD agencies, et cetera.
Please, Mr. President, Ms. Housewoman.
Good evening. I just wanted to say that we wanted to come back probably next month or upon just a little presentation and we'll have practice and everything that we've been working on for two and a half years.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Council members, for that. Consent?
Uh, Resolution twenty-three dash one-three-two. Resolution authorizing the city of Trenton to apply for a set funds through the city, uh, excuse me, through the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, N J C A. Uh, this will be a twenty-twenty-three legislative grant in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars.
Questions? Consent?
And there's an official vote on Resolution, Resolution twenty-three dash one-three-four. And that resolution is, Resolution supporting downtown, in support of downtown Trenton, neighborhood preservation.
Questions, Council?
Moving on to ordinance, this is the first reading. The ordinance twenty-three dash zero fifteen. Ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property identified on the city tax map as three to five, fifth mark place, block one-five-six-zero-four, block eighty-nine, pursuant to N J S A forty-eight, colon, twelve, thirteen, V, five, to the least, achieve local hunger for the sum of fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, I just have a question on the general condition of these properties, uh, because the prices are maybe very low, of course, but, um, need one's imagination, it's expensive renovation work in order to become adequate. So I was just wondering if we could find out in the administration? Just because some members of the public may see not the financial amount and go along that, you know, these aren't really redevelopment, so.
Who's Standback? I don't have any information, if you're aware of it, for Thursday, but just in general, these types of, of sales of the sidewalks, where you can offer out, or if you're a, a prospective customer, respective public who are adjacent to that, and then if the president is, hires better, then we would basically go with that.
And as we can find lots for cash purposes, et cetera?
Right, and then we consider those, we can go back and test.
Thank you, sir.
Order twenty-three dash sixteen. Order that's authorized the sale of city-owned property identified on the city tax map as fifty-one Spring Street, block three-five-zero-one, block four, pursuant to N J S A forty-eight, colon, twelve, thirteen, five to Guloio, C, R, for the sum of six thousand dollars.
Questions?
Order twenty-three dash seventeen. Order that's authorized the sale of city-owned property identified on the city tax map as thirteen, Fort Logan Avenue, block two-five-nine-zero-two, block three, pursuant to N J S A forty-eight, colon, twelve, thirteen, V, five, to few other properties, uh, safe, for the sum of seven thousand dollars.
Questions?
Order twenty-three dash eighteen. Order that's authorized the sale of city-owned property identified on the city tax map as two-zero-eight, Fort Logan Avenue, block sixteen-o-three, block twenty-five, pursuant to N J S A forty-eight, colon, twelve, thirteen, V, five, to James Ross, with the sum of fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Uh, Mr. Garcia, I believe, and, uh, Dr. McKeever was saying that is the assessed land value, is he on this? Did we get that? Is it there?
It's in America.
Thank you. Thomas, yes, thank you.
There was public area. Uh, what is it? Uh, public area secondary ordinance is twenty-three dash fifteen, through ordinance twenty-three dash eighteen, will be upheld on May fourth, twenty-twenty-one. Moving on to ordinance twenty-three dash oh-one, oh-one-nine. Order that's authorized the sale of city-owned property identified on the city tax map as one-seventy-eight Sherman Avenue, block two-one-six-zero-one, block seventy, pursuant to N J S A forty-eight, colon, twelve, thirteen, V, five, to Joandito Rodriguez, for the sum of five thousand, three hundred dollars.
Questions? Save.
Order twenty-three dash twenty. Order amendments, amendment supplement, chapter fourteen, in the code of city of Trenton traffic, one-way streets as it applies to Ledger Avenue.
Questions? Save.
Order twenty-three dash oh-two-one. Order that's authorized the sale of city-owned property identified on the city tax map as six-seven-three to six-seven-seven, Lamont Street, block one-one-two-zero-two, block thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, pursuant to N J S A forty-eight, twelve, thirteen, V, five, to six-seven, six-seventy-one, Lamont Street, LLC, for the sum of fifteen thousand dollars.
Questions? Yeah, I have a question. Can you, you're on the seat?
Okay, um, my first question, Mr. Standback, is that it is listed in this ordinance. These parcels are small, numerous amounts of land on the side of continuous property owner, that is, and big, it's a significant amount of time. That is unsure. Those lots are sizes of homes. My lot for my home is exactly the size of those lots. So why is this written inside?
Well, that was, I understand, you don't believe the assessment, do you?
Yeah, because if you look at, um, the map, that we had, the first map, that actually showed actually my house lot, just a teeny tiny bit smaller, and I have one of the largest lots on the, on the street. My lot is six-eighty-five, lot nineteen.
That's good.
Uh, the other person that I have is, um, the other contiguous property at six-seventy-nine, who also owns three other properties in the same vicinity, um, they actually did not receive proper notice. If you look at the letter, the letter to them was sent to the wrong address. Lot of rocks is actually six-eighty-two hundred, which is, it was sent to eighty-two, that's what she said. And I did, um, speak with them and they had, um, acquired those properties prior to this, and they would have been interested in these properties. They were not given proper notice.
Okay, I understand.
Okay. My other question is, I understand they wanted to have a multifamily, um, building on this lot. Um, my concern is parking, will we, how will they, because right now, the, um, the homeowners at six-eighty-two that own three other properties, they actually don't rent those properties out. So we only have the two cars for four homes right now. They actually use those houses for, like, you know, other things, like an art gallery, office, things like that, for themselves. So there already is no parking on that lot at all. So adding a multifamily home, like six students. So adding a multifamily home, like six units or supporting four units, would highly congest that area. Now, I have an understanding, I think that they, yeah, I mean, there's no parking. I don't know where the gentleman would find parking for these.
So just so you know, if they wanted to have this building, this is just for purchase of lot, they would still have to come before the executives, the out party, and in front of council to approve for what they want to do, the end of the planning process. So just because that's what they'd like to do in respect to the purchase, doesn't mean that it would come out of the way, that would have a problem with that.
Okay, and because these are all large or blocks, regular, you know, home-sized lots, their price at eighty-three hundred dollars, would they be able to purchase for five thousand dollars or less? Was the business a lot?
Well, that's because I think that was the divisionary price.
Okay. Was there any process for advertising for these lots, no?
Obviously, there was.
Okay.
Because it was a, you know, in this community.
Okay. And was there any stipulation by the city for how this land had to be used or should be used or cannot be used?
No, none.
Okay. Okay, so, I mean, respectfully, I would, I would think because the owners of City Two never received notice, I think that they deserve to process to be able to have the option of holding these lots. That's my question.
Any other questions? Do my, what we just found out at City Two is not any progress, I want to have this whole place.
That's President, so I think it's a good one.
Yes, it is.
Look up for resolution, Councilwoman Nevers.
Yes.
But President, please, Anna.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa, Anna.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And President.
Yes.
Order Twenty-three dash oh-two-two, ordinance to approve the amendments to central city development area plan to include mixed-use district.
Questions?
Mr. President, for the public, for this tonight, can we have an explanation of where this is actually applied? Is there not certain, is there not a issue? I'd like to just call her, Mr. Cruz, and Mr. Smith. Just if you could come and explain where this is in the city and what this is actually in the American capital? Because, Mr. Republican, I have a back in the map.
Well, it's never, I'd like to introduce one of my partners who was planning, who has a much more complex experience. This is Michael.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michael Culver, senior coordinator for City Transit. The industry development area falls by Walla Avenue in, sort of near the Trenton train station. If I remember right, it starts, the development starts above Momma and goes up. So this is going to do a, we knew, most of the central city development area is a residential neighborhood, which permits single-family to, single-family attached, single-family detached, and our homes. As we get closer to the train station, there's, there's developed, proposed development, to do mixed-use development in that area, which is a little bit of multi-family housing, some townhomes, adult house, townhomes, a little bit more density. And this is, this has been submitted to the city council previously for, for, to be directed to the planning board. The planning board found that this wasn't aligned with the Trenton plan, the objectives of concentrating developments in the Trenton train station, and is back to you now for a description.
Can you clarify on what you mean by mixed-use? Sometimes it could be mixed-use of commercial or residential storefronts and apartments. I hear it's made townhomes, and they, they would be, like, exactly, you're talking about, it's all residential?
Generally, mixed-use refers to a combination of residential and commercial, in some, in some combination. So in this case, some of the development, some of the properties would be residential or commercial, and they're developed in the development, some would be residential. In this case, mixed-use is not, you're not permitting the pursuit of developments in this case. What we're doing is reusing, doesn't mean it would be redevelopment plan to change the underlying zoning. So the zoning of this area, part of the redevelopment plan, will permit residential uses, the zoning will permit, uh, different types of residential uses. It will permit single-family, it will permit timehouse, it will permit rental, it will permit family housing, it will permit the commercial development in that area. So they would, planning to develop, they would still have to go to planning board, or set plan development, set plan review, that kind of stuff. What it will do is remove the need for zoning rights in these days.
So we would be able to prevent this type of, well, commercial, which is by, not residential, but for the type of commercial I'm talking about, storefronts. So would we be able to prevent storefronts? Because that is a residential area. There's a park right there, and the only thing that's really right there in the immediate area is one corner store, both big, and a bar shop. So it's really a whole new area, and I would repeat, would require a line where it could be, sort of, free.
So for a mixed-use district, you are permitting commercial to be built as a right in that area. We strongly support this. One of the fundamental basis of the Trenton master plan is that we are trying to encourage walkable communities. And a walkable community, that people can, in their neighborhood, walk to neighborhood basic commercial features. So in, it is very common, I live in Chambersburg. In Chambersburg, I walk to my bodega, I walk to my restaurants, I walk to other lots of commercial establishments, and these can interact with a residential neighborhood. Some can remain residential neighborhoods, that doesn't work so well. So Westport would be a single-family homes. It's not a great neighborhood to make some commercial, but for large parts of the city, it is. So in this part of Walla Street, we've, we actually heard, as residents, about wanting that kind of commercial. One thing I will say about this is that in this particular case, we are preferring this in order to commit a particular development to happen. I know several of you attended a workshop on the Trenton development, redevelopment area plans, the Trenton update. That process is ongoing, this is one of those redevelopment plans. This will come back to you again, probably by the end of the year, for a much more thorough update on the city development area plan. But the consensus that we've heard from the neighborhoods is that they want more than these in this area. People want to be able to walk to something in their neighborhood. The other issue that we have in this neighborhood is that this is the area where there's a lot they can seize. You walk up, walk down, you're able to that. So this is a really hard development proposal, so you get some good developments in that area. And what's really impressive about it is the architectural style of the neighborhood that they're proposing is more cleanly mixing into existing, kind of homes that they have in that area, better than they'll see in most plans. This is a really strong plan, and I think it's a good opportunity for the city.
Yes, it is a brownstone area.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions? Thank you.
Public hearing in secondary, for ordinance Twenty-three dash nineteen, for ordinance Twenty-three dash twenty-two, upheld on May eighteen, twenty-twenty-one. You know, Council President, we are at public comment. You have a public comment, please?
Sorry, for the public comment, there was, I tried to get on table, but it's leaving.
Okay.
Nobody was, was. Seventeen, seventeen. I'd like to, eventually, before to hand the cable, that, so there is one discussion.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
So moving to the second, I won't ignore it. Councilwoman Nevers?
Yes.
Council President, please, Anna.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa, Anna.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President, please. Motion, carry.
So the question on the liaisons for the various ordinances, the agenda, revolutions, both, both tabled, and some are pretty good, that, for discussions, I'll leave it, passed. Comments, comments, and, importantly, is the one answer.
Sure, I would first.
Just believe it, we took this time, of course.
Well, I would, I would like for us to address all fourteen of the boards. However, considering time, I do know that some of them are inactive, dislocated, and, you know, bring those back to being active. So I would just suggest that we proceed with the boards that we have chosen to lead on this floor, with the exception of zoning the TBA, and the remaining boards that we have not chosen to lead on this floor, or discuss, and proceed with the six boards that we did discuss. Well, sorry, five, that would take two minutes. So proceed with the five boards, or leave some that we had, and then, like I said, a discussion about seating, because I know that there's still concerns among people about that, and then also addressing the, the other boards at a later time.
And last?
I would like to concur with my colleague, Ms. Edwards, I think we should vote on another five positions with the exclusion, well, four after the topic at the moment, with the exclusion of zoning, board adjustment, Trenton Downtown Association, and planning board, as it was made. Where it's made, that planning board apparently scheduled its meetings on the same night that we have state council meetings, which are maybe difficult for zoning.
Say it one more time.
So Mayor and planning board, when they approve the calendar, they have their meetings on similar indexes as us, which the person in council who delays on, is actually a very important member on the planning board. So which may make it difficult, hopefully, that can get back to five, in case they have a meeting not happening.
Motion?
Man President?
Man President.
So I was going to say, to both colleagues' points, I agree with them. So I think that if we move on the four, that we know we can do. And then, on the, on the three that still need discussion, we omit them at this time, until those discussions are had, and then to Councilwoman Nevers' point about the other boards acting, inactive, we figure that out, and then pull the, those three back all together at a later time.
So we do a motion, please, Garcia, have a seat.
So this is motion to, I'm trying.
Proceed with the four, and have discussion on the three.
Okay, so most, so proceed with most of those motions to approve the resolution, excluding the three that would be zoning board, TBA, and, and. Okay, so that's the motion?
Yes, motion.
Okay. Second, if you, of all, Councilwoman Nevers?
Yes.
Council President, please, Anna.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa, Anna.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President, please.
Yes.
Motion, carry. I believe you are at public comment, at this point, John.
Yes, sir.
Can I support you, sorry? Only, only, so, so the discussion at a later time, at a later time, it's not tonight, is not, okay?
Sounds good. All right, my first, first of the public comments, Vladimir Castillo.
Hi, my name is Vladimir Castillo. Greetings to honorable members. Sorry, excuse me. Hello, my name is Vladimir Castillo. Greetings to honorable members of the city council, the city leadership representing different departments, as well as the wonderful members of the audience here. My reason for being here today is to raise alarm at the current situation facing young adults and the children of Trenton, New Jersey. As a lifelong city resident, I have identified one common issue amongst young adults, children, and Trenton. Lack of opportunities which lead to personal development success. Lack of housing affordable, and as well as high-quality life housing. Basically, zero new construction in the city over the last five years, really, lack of new construction since I was born twenty-five years ago. In addition to the lack of funding for youth-based programs. While there are many nonprofits in Trenton, fortunately, our federal trends only deny, yet the failed change as a whole. They can't do it alone without, by just giving out grants, I believe that it's a coordinated effort required between the entire city. Truly, it's no one's fault, rather, it's a disconnection between the city's leadership and the youth, and the general power of social change and technological advancement. We live in a world that is forever-changing, meaning that the focus of the local city government also has to change with the times to account for the needs of the people, the new needs and the changing needs. This specifically relates to topics into the personal development, growth, and success of our people. Lack of jobs, as well as the lack of support for small businesses. Increasing support for entrepreneurship will truly work in the coffers of their homes and their neighborhoods, rather than a brick-and-mortar store, which your talent and dedication deserve is something which was looking. Something that will also increase the tax board, which I believe is very important to the city for the sale, for the sales tax of products, services, and experiences. While there are few establishments, for a city of ninety thousand five hundred residents, there are not enough. Take it from a twenty-five-year-old man who has visited almost all the coun, who has visited almost many countries in the years I've been alive, twenty-three counties, and I can attest to the fact that there's really absolutely nothing to do in Trenton, New Jersey. The lack of education attainment is also something that detrimental to our city as a whole. I don't really see too many opportunities for people to go back to college if they want to. For example, I graduated from Lehigh University with a finance degree, and I would love to go back to college and become a lawyer. Unfortunately, I have to look into the different resources in different cities and different states, because Trenton really has one, really specifically. Personally, I understand the difficulty getting a start on my career in Trenton, because after I graduated, I would have loved to come back here. But with a degree in finance and the economic difficulties that I faced in Trenton, which were only exacerbated by COVID, forced me to move to another city for the standard class of housing and the career, a college-educated person, coming from where we're coming from, should have access to, especially in the capital city of America's most wealthy state, New Jersey. If it is not clear by this point, I am asking the city council to please address the important part of the city's development in order to create a financially free, educated, and qualified Trenton resident base in order for our local economy to flourish. There must be a major change in the mentality of the youth for the goals of the Trenton to fit the city master plan to matter. Is there a focus for the people on the dirty? I'm not aware of so. It's a lack of housing, a lack of jobs, and a lack of educational attainment opportunity. I would just hope that there's increased support for entrepreneurs and the young people in Trenton. The great leader Nelson Mandela was said, "Education is the most powerful weapon you can use to change the world." And I wholeheartedly believe in that. In my heart, I truly hope and pray that you have listened to my words and help us, the youth, into the light of a brighter day. Because unfortunately, right now, we are in a dark place. It takes a village, but it's never too late. We can start right now. Together is the only way we'll be able to create lasting change. Again, my name is Vladimir Castillo. Thank you, God bless America.
What's that? Does it sound?
Good evening, Madam President, Vice President, and everyone else, President. I am Tonyka Summers. I am West Street President. I have a wife, a mother, who was raised two-sides into a doctor in the city. I am a city employee also, employed by the Trenton Police Department. A worship of Christ, friends to son, and unto to many. In this city, in nineteen ninety-five, I raised my right hand in sports to support and defend the Constitution of the United States. In two thousand and five, I also raised my right hand to faithfully, impartially, and justly perform my duties as a police officer in this city. There is oversight in place to be sure of this. It has been one thousand nine hundred and seven days since our last paid increase. Who was responsible for the oversight of ensuring we are compensated for our contractual agreements? Food prices have increased, Lord knows chickens are flossing because of their aid prices. Fuel prices are constantly fluctuating, yet our pain does not reflect rising prices. I am one voice representing many when I say I urge any and everyone who could to encourage DCA to sign the M U for our contract. Quit installing tacks. Quit playing with our livelihood. We are not lumber, we are not peace orange, we are not Patterson, we are Trenton, and we want our own now. This is a public forum for city residents and employees, which I count. So I, as I say this, please hear my plea.
Thank you.
The wedding's ready.
Good evening, Council President, Council Vice President, members of the council, DCA, and our Trenton community. I am Detective Garit Mania, and I am here to say on behalf of myself, my husband, who is also a dedicated Trenton police officer, as well as our relative, C.C. Tungu. On behalf of all I represent, I want to first reiterate our commitment to the vow of service and protection to our city. We chose the city of Trenton to help provide not only protect, not, to help provide not only protection, but to also help our city flourish as one of our community, as we are also part of this community. Today I stand here to present our concerns with what we see as a great and flawed contract renewal process. I stand here because you still, we still have no contract. Or realistic options indicating when we will have that contract. We are committed to the city, we show up every day to work, and not because it's a paycheck, but because it's our career. We now ask of your commitment to honor our livelihoods, our families, and respect our rights as our, as public service. Furthermore, we, the Trenton Police Department, along with the Trenton Fire Department, are the last two departments to go without a signed contract, the two departments who show up first. Last time, our PBA president, Michael Sherrin, stood up here and advised you that we were one thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven days without a contract. Today I'm here to tell you that we're at one thousand nine hundred and seven days without a contract. That's five years without a contract, without any sense of security or value to the work that we do. I ask, would this be acceptable to you? Would any of you remaining in your current employment without a sense of security, fearing for the stability of the future, unable to gather a sense of how you will continue to provide for not only yourself but your family? I will not speak for all, but I believe that I speak for most, and most will agree. This would be completely unacceptable, and I believe most can identify with the mental anguish and trauma this situation causes, especially in these times of rising inflation. As we ask the city council administration, would now ask DCA representatives, would any of you continue your job without a contract? The state ensures to renew contracts with the different unions. Should we as a state union not expect to treat equally and fairly? We, the men and the women represented here, believe we do. I am just one of first-generation Americans born and raised in the city of Trenton that have come back to serve our community, especially at a time when many, if not most, others were abandoning the city. I understand that the city administration has already taken steps necessary for our contract to be complete, and I thank you for that. But as we understand, progress has and continues to be delayed by the DCA. Because this is our only chance to speak openly to the DCA, I am here to exercise my right to ask that our contract must be pushed forward a sign. It's time to execute. Since then, we have worked through the COVID pandemic, where others were able to work from home and still give, we are still giving our absolute best. We strive to serve as positive role models, not only to future generations, but to reduce tension between residents and law enforcement. Despite the calls to the fundamentalist, we each come in and give our best, day in and day out. Regardless of where we work, we therefore ask our right to offer immediate action in response that honors our service by honoring a fair contract negotiated today. Again, it's time to execute. We deserve our contract, and so do the Fire Department. Thank you.
Council President, I have no other individuals listed for public time.
You don't want to say it, huh?
Certainly. Councilman Edwards.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for having me again. It's good to see so many briefly faces and a couple of. Uh, my comments are very short tonight. Um, I don't really have much to say. I do want to, um, take this moment to recognize Sequoia Bacon Joan, who was a non-legal little girl whose life was taken by a gun violence on March twenty-fifth last year. Just the exact issue attended the Father's Awards Dance, um, hosted by Fathers and then United. And it was truly as well, uh, with the fire committee where we honor her at this year's dance as well. So I just wanted to put that on the record and express my sincere condolences and prayers to her family. Um, I do want to talk about, uh, just bringing, uh, some more things about Trenton where it's good for us, right? I let them, the last time we know or heard, we were only about three percent who are completion. Um, and with that, I would like for us to redress the relations that our predecessors know to address, but also taking the opportunity to inform the other developer program that the state of New Jersey offers, the fire, fire op-ed mom. And they are installed when you open up the streets to, I mean, replace the letdown. So as a perfect opportunity to participate in this program, what that program allows us to do, to the best of my knowledge, um, is have our company, um, our op-ed moming, where Comcast and Verizon and other providers like that, would we, would have the tactics of our organization to us to do the charging services. We will also be able to provide three by five services throughout our city to the public, in parks, and we produce at bus stops and things like that. So people can just stop standing outside the state hall, and close the range, you can buy a lot, for example. So I just wanted to bring back to my colleagues' attention and to the public's attention, um, especially the administration. I have information at home, which I haven't remembered to bring with me, but, um, I survived it at New Jersey because of the municipality last year. I, I believe that our city could hardly do anything for this, and, like you mentioned, that this is fully funded by the state. And I believe that we would have to match it in funding. So while we're opening up our roadways, we can be and solve the fire op-ed moming. So that's my comments, but then, if anyone has anything to.
Vice President, Feliciano.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for hanging out with us here tonight, uh, at our meeting. Certainly, it's a pleasure to see everyone here with us. First, I'd like to comment really quickly to Mr. Castillo. Thank you for coming out tonight and for addressing us, um, with your concerns, with your points. You actually are an excellent candidate to consider, if you like, being on the mayor's young adult committee that he has established, right, and you're working with young adults in the community to see what the needs are, what your concerns are. So his aide, Karana Green, is here. Karana, put your hand up so he can see who you are. Please connect with Karana so that you can find out about that, if there's something that she would like to participate in. Certainly love to hear your voice and see, you know, what it is that she would bring to the table with the other young adults that the administration is currently working with. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next, I'd like to say to, um, Summers, Detective Summers and Payton, and the rest of Trenton Police Department, right, and Fire Department. Um, it is unfair that, you know, you've gone now one thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven days, one thousand nine hundred and seven days without a contract, and certainly we are grateful for your service and for what it is that each and every one of you do throughout your daily walk here in the city of Trenton. I myself wonder, um, for the fact that we can just call and examine what it is, right? We're just gonna say what it is. When there is a fire in a state building or state occupied building, it is Trenton resources that go out and handle the situation. It is our, our water department, our people that are handling it. It's our police that go out and handle situations that take place in these buildings that are occupied by state right employees and state people that they have, they don't pay us the full taxes, they're paying the full taxes. They benefit from the people here in the city of Trenton. They do need to rectify and to resolve your contracts and appreciate the service work that we do. But now, I don't want to speak out of turn, because from my understanding, there is a procedure and a process and things, and there's a bit of negotiation that takes place, and maybe there's some things that, that they agree with or that they don't agree with. I am hopeful that whatever it is, though, we want, that it is resolved sooner rather than later, so that you all are made whole, right? So please don't think that we are not on top of it. Please don't think that when we're having conversations that we are not bringing up the fact that you are doing your fair duty, as well as everyone else here in the city of Trenton, right? From the state of New Jersey, okay? So let's be clear on that. Uh, I want to shout out Hub thirteen East Street, Community Oriented, who can provide appropriate space for artists and entrepreneurs to work. So if you've not been by, Hub thirteen is right near the smokehouse. I encourage you to stop in and check them out. They're gonna be having different events and things, um, that are gonna be forthcoming. Then there's one twenty East Street. I also want to shout out the TCCA, right? We went to a meeting the other night. We learned, um, about a lot of different initiatives that are going to be coming through different groups and everything. So it's the Trenton Council of Civic Associations, and that's Verdi, McMullen, and Ray Ingram, they head that up. And so to all of the people, you know, that were there, they were saying, one twenty East Street, they're gonna open, um, they're looking to open in twenty twenty-six, taking a historic church, right, and they're converting it to a community-based, multi-use cultural center, right? They're gonna, um, they're looking to establish a community advisory group, a youth advisory group. So if you're interested in either of those, I encourage you to, um, Google it, right? And I can give you information for what it is, but it's the one twenty East Street. Please look into that as well. This Thursday, Moms Demand Action, they're gonna be here in the interim at City Hall. They're having a Women's History Month celebration. They are actually partnering with the Trenton Anti-Violence Coalition. They will be here in the interim from five to seven P.M. While Madam President has served as our community leader here in the city of Trenton faithfully, over time, I have had the, um, also privilege of being a volunteer with Moms Demand Action. So shout out to them and their phenomenal work. Madam President, with your leadership and community, thank you for the services that you've all done over the years to bring forth, um, you know, situations where truth about, you know, the gun violence are looking and ways to make it stop. Um, the Trenton Punk Rock Flea Market is coming up April first, second at Cure Arena. Last thing I want to say, shout out to the Trenton Street Teams. Um, I actually got an opportunity to have a conversation with some of them yesterday. And while we look at people, sometimes we take things for granted, oh, you're out there standing on the street corner, oh, you know, you provide safe, that's cute, what do you do? No, they actually are out connecting with the community. They actually walk through the communities today. They were in Prospect Village, walking through, connecting and talking. They had previously went to Donovan Homes. They were out South Trenton, walking and connecting with the community, right? To build those relationships that are needed, um, to offer safe people to talk to that come to and fro. Also, they provide, um, resources for people in the community, uh, that, I mean, they will connect you to the resources. For example, I learned from them that there is the organization, it's the Victory Organization, that actually assists with providing resources, um, and helping for people who have, uh, suffered from gun violence or from violent acts. They will help them to complete the victim's compensation form, uh, so that if there is, there would, there should be no mistake, right? Because sometimes we fill out forms and we may leave something off of the form. They actually help you with the form. So please tell somebody to get in contact with the Trenton Street Team. I know that they have, uh, people that are in the Trenton Free Public Library, um, and then they have hours and things, and they are there. Again, you can look up their information. I'll add the information, um, for the next meeting on Thursday. But I just want to shout out all the tremendous organizations and the people doing the work in the community, and thank them very much. So to Mr. Castillo, again, to your point, it is together that we make the difference. It is by us collaboratively, collaboratively, working together that we will get things done, right? And it will happen. It will happen, one day at a time. Thank you all for coming out. I appreciate you so much, and, uh, we'll do it again on Thursday.
Councilman Figueroa, get her.
Good evening, everybody. Um, thankfully, uh, Councilwoman Vice President, uh, Feliciano kind of spoke for me, so I really have to watch the ad. I pretty much echo her sentiments. Um, you know, Mr. Castillo, you know, we've talked multiple times. You are definitely a force of strength and knowledge and will, um, and I do think that, you know, contracting in the mayor's office to be one of the, one of the new, one of the new committee or something would be an awesome fit for you. And everything else that you're trying to do, just, just keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Yes. Proud. You're a fellow South Florida, Trenton, you. Very proud of you. Um, again, I echo, um, what Councilwoman Feliciano said about our police, um, and thank you for addressing the DCA. Um, you know, we'll, you guys know that it's not stuck with us, and, you know, we hope to get those contracts for us that we can get you guys, you know, what you all deserve. So thank you for speaking out today. Um, I also want to, uh, concur with, um, all the, the things going on in the community, TCA, DCA, you know, all of those things. The Trenton Street Teams, I also got to walk with them in South Trenton. They are doing wonderful things. Um, we are having a cleanup on Saturday at the latest being hosted by Powerment House, um, in South Trenton on Larrington Street, starting at Larrington and Ferment. If you're not doing anything from ten A.M. to twelve P.M., you want to come back, you want to come out and give back to the community, please come out and help. Um, and then I just want to thank the city of Trenton, the directors, the supervisors, um, our council liaison, Karana Green, um, for all the hard work that they've been doing with these, that things be done in this city. Uh, my very respectful request, I probably sent, what, ten, fifteen emails today, Karana? I don't know.
Yes, yes. Yes, and, and honestly, today alone in our South Florida, I think eight tests got completed, thanks to Brian Lee, we, thanks to Karan, um, thanks to other, you know, members of our city, Trenton, yeah, getting the work done. Uh, from removing debris, removing matches and displaced, from, uh, you know, putting stop signs up, from, uh, spilling holes in alleyways, you name it, the things are getting done. And I don't know if, if, you know, it's just a, a better day, uh, you know, a better group of employees, or it's the respectful manner of your request of me being made. But thank you guys so much for getting this done. It makes such a difference. Um, my, my constituents are always emailing me pictures, you know, I have them on Facebook, and their, their status, and, um, but to that point, I want you guys to know that we can also do better. So it's not about following around with constituents and picking up after them. Um, it's not about, you know, telling you time and time again, you can't put this here. It's about us learning ordinances, learning laws, applying them, and being accountable ourselves. Um, you know, things like when you put on a mattress, you know, you go to, um, Calhoun Street, uh, with the address. Um, I think it's seven oh-nine, Calhoun, seven oh-seven Calhoun Street, you get a mattress for free. They'll have inside a form, you just get to their pickup, you know, things like that. So these are things that we can learn ourselves. These are things that I can, you know, provide information, or any of our council members can provide this information to you. If you don't know, just reach out to us, because again, you know, it's about us, um, also, you know, picking up after ourselves and holding ourselves. If you don't know, just reach out to us, because again, you know, it's about us also, you know, picking up after ourselves and holding ourselves accountable, such as you want the city to do the same. I don't mind making these requests, but you guys can also, people can also learn how to make their requests themselves, but I know it gets dug up faster if it goes through, you know, one of us council members. And also, just want to let you guys know that I'm having discussions about the inspectors in the city. I just had a conversation yesterday, and we don't have any coming inspectors. We have a whole, Larrington Street has been there for like four months. We have no inspector to come, so we can't fix it after, you know, what Trenton Board Horse has done. We can't cover the whole backs. We have just a plane on top of it. We have pictures and videos of kids running on it and jumping on it. It's just dangerous. So I toured, I talked to the mayor's today. I wanted to see if you get a job for those things we can get it up. I know the terrorist room in the new budget wasn't coming for us. We can approve to get these inspectors in place for the city of Trenton, you know, and help them, you know, with their certifications. I know the city of Trenton, they reached to help them with the certifications ourselves, and now they have to actually go to school for it, so, but, you know, we need the work we stake out. But, you know, this council is moving, is shaking and working. Just wanted to let you guys know, and again, thank you for being here this evening.
Counselor Woodhouse.
Yes, thank you all for being here this evening. One, thank you to our police department. You are grateful for all that you do. And I know a lot of you do a lot of things in the community outside of work, so I want to thank you all as well, and would love to get your contracts settled as soon as possible. So thankfully, you're sharing your sentiments about DCA, you'll be able to hear what you guys say, if you think it's appropriate to be useful. Just a couple of announcements. I also want to address Mr. Castillo, thank you for coming forward, and thank you for always being engaged, since I first met you, maybe here goes your own express interest in helping us grow this city. And we have to invest our city in order to attract the millennials, attract people to come and run and live here. So we gotta get a little bit of time, and I think all of us here, aren't people, us having that type of city, that everyone wants to be, and elders, young adults, millennials, everybody in between, the working class. So thank you for bringing that to us also. I just wanted to just do a couple of announcements. Councilwoman Kettner, Mr. Roy just said the cleanup, it is hosted by Trenton South Florida Association along with the Alphard House, that is at 10 a.m. So if anyone wants to come on out, come join us, and thank you to Ms. Richardson and Ned for the recreation work that supply most of the garbage bag, things that we need for that cleanup. As far as of the inspectors, they need to bring that up also. I was just gonna suggest, I don't know how this works, as I am learning the process too, but until we do hire or have certified inspectors, is it possible or could we suggest that we possibly contract out from our neighborhood, neighboring townships to help out so that way the business of this is not that standstill any longer? That seems to be a big issue with everyone across the board, they are in need of inspectors. So I don't know if we can do that, not do that, it's in the budget too, so, but that's an idea, maybe something that we can look into, to provide some inspectors or just to alleviate that issue that we have in the city. Just another announcement, the New Jersey Youth Challenge Academy, it is a program that has no cost to young adults from ages 16 to 18. They provide them with some services for their, I think, what? They are prior to tuition for students of 16 and 18 to actually help get their high school diploma. So there are some young adults who may have dropped out of school at some point. I forgot the information, and also, I have it embedded posted on our city website. It is hosted by the National Guard Training Center, and it's actually, the actual building is located in Sebring, but it is all, it's reputed for young adults. It's all over the state of New Jersey. And then I also wanted to mention the citizenship classes that I mentioned before. They are beginning April 3rd, June 19th, if anyone was interested. It's all online, so it's not that difficult to access. And I believe we have that Karan posted, and I just have one more announcement.
We have the Latinas, they meet every third Saturday of each month from 10 to 12 at 726 South Clinton Avenue. If anyone is available to stop by, and we're welcome to yourself, also, thank you for being here this evening, 10 to 12, every Thursday. I'm sorry, really quickly, I just received an email from the principal of Great St. John Middle School. I don't know who's from the south in this room, but you don't have to be from the south. Great St. John is hosting a program tomorrow to talk about creating safe space where even young children feel their risk of physical altercation, a line of communication for community members to relay information they may have witnessed, support local businesses to prevent theft, walking school bus initiative that it pays parents who are supporting safe travel to come to school, and fostering a deeper connection between school and community that moves the breaking from students from your school to students in our community. So if you're available tomorrow, it begins at 5 to 6:30. Please come out. Thank you.
Counselor Harrison.
Where do I start? First, tonight's proposal, proposal village, we're taking care of seniors. We see that 110 units are occupied, and that's a way to listen, which tells me that the people want to go there, so, thank you. It's good to see you just moving forward. To the men and women of the fire, the police department, you're right. Due to the pandemic, you guys are out on the street every day out there working. You weren't doing Zoom, you weren't doing virtual, you weren't wearing a, didn't handle it, you didn't. So you well deserve the money you deserve, so that needs to come forward. The money, the city of Trenton deserves money. Move the city forward, can't keep giving us crumbs, telling us we're gonna fix our problems, because we need inspections, we need other departments, we need staff. If you're gonna move the city forward, crumbs aren't gonna make the city move forward. We're the capital city. It's about time to give us the money we deserve, and it's the people of this great city deserve. Because the next generation, they need some hope. We need seniors in the city to realize that we are actually working for you and moving the city forward. Tonight, it's great for the city. We'll see the city-owned properties. It's good to see that we're moving forward, getting rid of city-owned properties, because that's what we need to be doing. We need to move the city forward in properties, development, keep the ball rolling, because that's what the people want to see. They don't want to see very much, they want to see the ball rolling, and, um... And to thank all our staff, the directors, the people who work in this building, because every day, this city moves work by the help of all of us. We need to continually work together, whether it's governors, office, DCA, the men, women of the fire, the police, the administration, this council. We have to continually work together to move the city forward. So thank all your help, because if we work together, it's gonna get done. And if we not working together, we need to band together and make sure it gets addressed. Because there does never need to be a city that continuously has been going backward for less than 30 years. 30 years this city's been struggling, where the rest of the city's been moving forward. So it's based upon us, and we have a lot of people in this room that want us to have it. There's a lot of people who want to, on all sides of the aisle. So thank you everybody here tonight, and let's continue moving forward, Trent all the way.
Counselor Williams.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. You got a lot accomplished, and as you can see, we're a council that wants to get things done, and getting this done is very professional. I'd just like to address several issues right off the bat. Regarding the project, Frontal Village, it was a very professional presentation, thank you for that. I'm very happy to hear that there's seniors, nor anyone will be displaced while we do these renovations. That is important to the heart of our city. I want to also, to Mr. Castillo, I want to encourage you, sir, don't give up. On this council are people that have obtained master's degrees. In front of us are people in this room that have attained master's degrees, and we're all working for Trenton. I myself was fortunate to go to two leading universities, we had a master's in business. And unfortunately, when, in the first week I was there, one of my classmates said to me, you from Trenton? I said, yes, because that you get out a lot. That was 1991, and all he knew was the bridge, that they take the train. So please don't give up. We're here to support you. We can have given advice, and sure, everyone who would to tell you how he did it, but if you want to go to law school, you'll make that happen, and there'll be people standing behind you to help you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I also like to address several things regarding the police department, and I think, you know, we have had Detective Megan Summers, thank you for your service to our country, and for your service to our city, as well as Detective Kalen Pennant, who have gotten here over these course of these months, and also Detective Timmy DeHill, who got to know my children through the Trenton City Child Police Academy, and she was a great influence on my daughter about four years ago. And every time that my daughter and my son see Detective Hill, she knows how worried their eyes look, and how much of a big smile they have, because she got to know the police department, and she had directed the fact of particularly inspiring our daughters to push herself and like and apply to schools, and people said she couldn't apply to. So ma'am, that's a little personal, but you are a member of our family, and you will be always. Regarding what is going on in the police department and the fire department contracts, my other colleagues have very eloquently addressed this. It's something needs to get taken care of, particularly as we understand it, there's a whole long process this DCA, and please know that members of your city council have certainly let DCA know our feelings and what we hope for in the future. And we hope that things will get better, much improved, and there will be more support coming for our city. But the one thing I would say to DCA is, if you're gonna hold a beat to the fire, please turn off that heat when the city passes muster. And we are doing what we need to do. We have to get processes to go faster, when even things are contracts, as we hear today, is a complicated process. We want to work with you. We want to do our best with you, but we need to make sure that particularly police and fire, that things get done, get done soon. Thank you for that. I also want to address, and this is one thing I would possibly, we would cross the border, actually, and I put this as a bigger question for a law department to address at another time, there's a great article today in NJ.com from Trenton Times regarding fight wages, which I know some of my colleagues would be familiar with from school, some of ours are having in schools. And I found it very unfortunate, and in a way, I'm not sure exactly how to verbalize, but when we went to travel to Trenton High Boys Basketball Game for the final state championship game, we were actually at Central Regional High School, without a court on the lady, and she committed suicide after fight videos were made of her being, having daylight being out by kids out of school. And I questioned whether there's something legally we can do here within the confines of Trenton, New Jersey, to punish people for that. And, because these do not only happen in our school system. And if there's a way to do that, I asked the law department to research that, and we can maybe have a conversation with the police department about what we can do to help mitigate that, because it's a growing problem. It's not getting better. Perhaps there's ways we can help the least where we live. And finally, regarding plumbing inspections, we need to have, plumbing inspector McCollough spoke about that earlier. Whether it's finding inspectors from another municipality, we have to solve it, Bob, temporarily regarding the plumbing inspectors. Mr. Alencio Vasquez came and spoke earlier about a few minutes ago. It doesn't mean development, it doesn't mean improvement on our neighborhoods, and it's something we have to make a fair, accurate, common means. And I hope that our city will do that. We must do it, because we have to get out of our own way. If we can get out of our own way, then others have to get out of our way, because Trenton needs to be forward, and it will be forward. Because a lot of the great people in this room, and a lot of our people live in this city, and, you know.
Counselor President Chris.
So good evening, everyone. Again, I don't want to be the same John with Vladimir, I just give, you know, I've talked several times, and I agree with Madam Vice President, I think that would be a good option to deal with connecting with Karan. We've got a lot to give, and offer our community, and we need to hear from you. But I also want you to know that we are. We've only been here almost three months. And it's gonna take some time. It's not gonna take three months, it's not gonna take six months, it's not gonna take five months, but we are moving this. There is demolition that's going on, there are housings that we're looking at. We are doing our best to try and work with from there, so we can get economic development, jobs started again, so we can get the jobs here. It is not overnight process. It is a process. If we did overnight, it would turn out to be trash. We cannot rush it. We want whatever comes to the top of the queue. We want it done, we want it done right, and that is in the process. They have to take, take their course to our DCA. Thank you for being here. You guys have been diligent since I have been here, you've been nothing but respectful to us, and you get some questions when we ask them, and so I appreciate that. Thank you for not getting under the roof, government, police officers.
May I ask, sir? I think it's a two-year contract.
Yes, sir.
We got, I got a contract yesterday.
You got, I was about to go once, and I was going to get, you got the contract yesterday. And they got me back the contract yesterday, and that's what I was going to address, is I understand that there is a process, and everything has to take its course. So our police officers, our fire department, know that we are working with DCA, because if you guys are essential, there's no way that our city can operate without you. Absolutely positive, no way. And we don't want you to thrive operating without you. We know your value, we know your worth, and we want you to get what is due you. So we're not fighting you, we are trying to make sure that you have a respectful relationship. So just like Phil said, he's letting us know when we're getting things, and when we have to go back and forth with that, whatever process, so we can move it along as expeditiously as we possibly can, and respectfully, because we want everybody to get what is due them. So thank you for that. Thank you for giving the underneath, that's exactly what I remember. They did get it. I missed Shireen, they gave you a new part, and they made sure they got these two back here, so we're here for DCA. And that's what it's about, it's working together, and a council is letting each other know what's going on and what is going on, so that we know that there are footsteps, there are things, it's not stagnant, there are processes that we have to go through. And once we get that, I promise you, we're staying on top of it, we're having these conversations with one another. DCA, I have actually, as you're listening to all of us who are talking, there's a lot of money that we need. Our city is still, even though we have a good working council right now, we need inspectors. There's a lot that is needed here in this community to get our city up and running again. We need the money here. It's not just asking for money that we're gonna just borrow from. We need these monies in order to get our city moving forward. So I ask that you would hear what's going on. If you need to walk around and take a look and see, we are trying to follow what we can, if our hands are tied. And I know that it's not your purpose for being here, so ask them to clean, get, listen to the heart of the city, and know that we're trying to do this right for our capital city, and work with us on that. To those who presented on the seat, thank you for your presentation. Frontal Cap Project, I look forward to that. I'm happy to be getting things done, and with dignity here, not even, I'm so tired of us getting bread crumbs. We are not a bread crumbs city. We are the capital city. We have the best, we deserve the best, and there's no reason for us not to have it. So all these new projects that are going on, I want them to go forward. When it comes to our water system, there is no way we're ever gonna compromise the health of our community. When it comes to buildings, we're not gonna compromise that, that there's a house that is left, that is about to fall down. And people may have, I know, ties to emotionally, but emotional will not save you when it comes to a house falling. So we are trying to work with you, it just, you know, when we're getting this water system done, we're getting this resolution done, we are first thinking about what is in the best interest of our community. That is our first priority, and it is also our last priority. I want to say thank you, as I always try to do here, I want to thank our members. Thank you for being here. I know it's not your job, everybody comes to give you praise for it, but I thank you, Ms. Ruth, I thank you, police officers, for being out here this evening, for parting your time off, and you know what, you're here with us. So I thank you, each and every single one of you for being out here on this evening. I thank Ms. Ruth, who always give every single time. I appreciate you, Ms. Ruth, and thank you, DCA, and thank you to all the great people who comes out here and is faithful every single council meeting, and doesn't get paid for all the work that he does. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. To Mr. West, thank you to you and your staff. Thank you. You guys work hard, you get things done, you get seven of us up here for a call. We're always in your ear, and you take our calls every single time. Thank you for that. So to all of you, Mr. Cologie, you have been diligent with us. You and Mr. West, you get a lot of calls from us. Thank you. Yeah, yes, so, that's why I want to kill this voice, you know. But thank you for what you do. Thank you for being here. Thank you just for your diligence and making sure that we get it right, when you're legal and right. and making sure that we get it right, whether legal or civil, if you don't have all the lawsuits and everything, we're not going to say anymore, if you need to stay out of legal trouble. Um, I wanted to also say to my colleagues, I appreciate you doing your due diligence. When we ask you questions up here, and I don't want you to show apologies, we're making sure that if one has not thought about it, or maybe the other has thought about it, and the other one is studying it, because we're here, that's my question too. So I appreciate everybody that is doing their due diligence up here, but going through this, not just one, page by page, to make sure we get it right, people. So thank you for that. And I would ask my colleagues to let's send it there, everybody in here, and let them know about these, that seem to be resounding. They, I would ask them, what does that even do about getting inspectors to get our city? That is real standing, that, having one inspector for this city makes absolutely no sense. That, 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 that is, that's not fair to anybody. We talk about economic development, we can't move anything, we can't get our buildings inspected. So let's ask respectfully, let's have a question, and let's see how we can get things moving. Um, I think that's all I have, and as always, I promise I'm going to read our city's presidential statement. Recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust, we are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility to seek excellence in the city's operations, and to serve all of the city's people with respect and compassion. I thank each and every one who could be out on this scene.
Councilperson, I want to make an additional, if you want to ask for motion to adjourn.
Motion.
I really apologize to everybody who points out my, and support everyone. Tomorrow, 12:02, at Starbucks, there'll be a Trent Firefighter event, so please, uh, go visit Starbucks and meet Trent Firefighter.